Security Personnel and Devices. 551.082, Discussing Disciplinary Matters or Complaints Regarding School District Children and/or School District Employees. 551.082, Discussing Personally Identifiable Information About Public School Students. 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. The Meeting of the Board of Trustees will reconvene in public at approximately 7:00 P.M. May I have your attention, please? Good evening. It is now 7:10 P.M. And the meeting of the Klein ISD Board of Trustees is reconvened. If you have not done so, please silence your cellphone, please. Thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate you making the effort and the commitment to join us. We are a school district of approximately 53,000 students and 6,000 employees, and more than 25,000 active volunteers. We also appreciate when members of the community and staff come to our meetings, such as you're doing tonight. Our shared vision is to ensure that every student enters with a promise and exits with a purpose. All of us working together, parents, teachers, staff, and community, will make that happen by forcing our, by focusing on pathways, challenge, equity, leadership, and continuous improvement. Thank you for partnering with us. You will note on tonight's agenda, a school district resident, employee, vendor, or potential vendor has an opportunity to address the Board of Trustees for four specific purposes. If anyone in the audience would like to address the Board of Trustees for any of the four listed reasons, would you please come forward and register with Mr. Doug James or Mrs. Christine Jackson at the table here to my right? If you haven't done so, please do so at this time. Tonight, Mr. Rick Mann will lead us in prayer, and a Boy Scout, Henry Hall Brown, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag and the Flag of Texas. Will you rise, please?
Oh, let's start with the pledge, shall we?
Oh, let's begin with the prayer.
Oh, perfect, perfect timing. Hi, Mr. Mann.
We're gonna start with the pledge. Go ahead. Thank you. This is Henry Hall Brown. Thank you for being there. Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas pledge.
Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much, Chairman.
Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking your blessings on this meeting of the leadership of the Klein ISD. We ask for your guidance to our decisions so that they may be in the best interest of the students, the faculty, administration, parents, and taxpayers of this school district. Father, we thank you for the outstanding opportunities that you provide to each and every one of us daily, living in this community, this state, and this nation, where freedom is a key word in our lives. Father, I ask that you watch over each and everyone here as we leave this evening, and also maintain safe passage for all our men and women in the armed forces that are in harm's way. Bring each of them home safe and soon. Father, I ask all these things in your Son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mann. School board meetings must be connected in accordance with strict Texas laws. For example, we cannot vote on any item that is not listed on the agenda. In fact, we may not publicly discuss items that do not appear on the agenda. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss items regarding personnel, the discipline of students, the acquisition of school sites, matters of school security, and specific items regarding legal advice. However, the final vote must be in the complete view of the public. Please understand that the meeting is for the Board to have discussion, to deliberate, and to take action. And I would ask that you refrain from making comments at any public or any public demonstration during the meeting, to allow us to focus on the matters before us. The superintendent in consultation with the Board President prepares the agenda and notice of meeting, which are distributed to each trustee one week before the Monday night meeting. If individual board meetings have, members have questions, they often call the superintendent prior to the meeting. Therefore, on many items recommended for approval, the trustees can quickly determine if they agree. If we seem to be moving quickly the agenda, through the agenda, it is only because we have prepared to make a decision without further question or discussion. We deeply appreciate you, the public, that you have bestowed this privilege on us, and we will continue to work diligently with the school administration on behalf of your children, our students. Dr. Champion, are we ready for our March celebrations?
We are, and we're gonna start with Klein in Space tonight. And so it's my joy to welcome Deputy Superintendent Dr. Jenny McGowan up, our amazing teaching and learning team, to share with us Klein in Space.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Champion, President Wrightmeyer, members of the Board, Ms. Spalding, and guests. Welcome this evening to our celebration of all of our Klein in Space Innovation Challenge students and educators. Klein in Space was made possible through an invitation by the National Center for Earth and Space Science Education to participate in the Student Starflight Experiment Program. Recognizing that this was an awesome opportunity for our students to access real-world and even out-of-this-world STEM education, we accepted the invitation, wrote the grant, and were awarded the opportunity for Klein ISD to launch Klein in Space. The first part of this Innovation Challenge asked students in grades five through 12 to compete with other students across the nation to develop a science experiment capable of testing in a microgravity environment. Students also developed written proposals and presentations as part of the evaluation process. Three teams were named as finalists in Klein ISD, and the winning team from Klein High School was selected to move forward for review from the National Center for Earth and Space Science Education. The second part of the challenge was called Packing for Mars. Students in grades K through four worked with their teams to study the biosphere of Mars in order to know what to pack, determine what could fit in a one-by-one-by-one yard container, and present their design to an external audience. The final portion of this STEM challenge highlighted our excellence in the arts with the Mission Patch Challenge. Students in grades K through 12 participated in this challenge, which culminated in sending two patches to the International Space Station on Mission 13. Let's take a quick look at this Klein in Space Innovation Challenge highlight video.
I think the whole concept of figuring out a simple solution to a complex problem, like piqued my interest.
I was like, oh, I have to try this out. I'm just gonna see if I like it, and if I like it, I'm gonna keep doing it.
I just heard about it, and I got excited. I thought it'd be fun to work with space. I'm a science teacher, so it fits right in.
Innovation challenges like Klein Space provide student teams real-world opportunities to work on what they learn and apply it out, in this case, not even real-world, out in space.
I think it's pretty cool, because it could be any of the teams in Klein.
Maybe our ideas can help innovate new ideas.
Trying to help them become successful. Bottom line, they are brilliant kids, and we wanna help them become successful. We wanna see Klein in space.
I packed this little animal, because we might feel homesick, and sometimes we wanna smell what it put some.
We packed pencil and a pencil, pencil sharpener, and paper, notebook, books, and hammer and nail. We want to pack Beyblades, a camera, certainly Velcro.
So instrumental in these efforts to coordinate the Klein in Space Innovation Challenge is Executive Director for Curriculum, Amy Miller. Amy is a student-centered and relationship-driven leader who always gives her best to ensure our promise to our students is realized in Klein ISD. She's here tonight to help us recognize our winners from each challenge. Amy?
Thank you, Dr. McGowan. Tonight is my honor to recognize these innovative pathway explorers. Students, when your team's name is called, please come up to the front to receive your certificate and have your photo taken. For the fifth through 12th grade Klein in Space Innovation Challenge, please join me in congratulating finalist team Lambda Omicron from Klein Oak. The title of their project is Viral Therapy of Bacterial Infections in Microgravity Settings. Team members include Rashab Ghosh, Eric Wells, Ben Nguyen, Joseph Martinez, and Joshua Martinez. They were led by Margaret Mason.
That's awesome.
Could I suggest, could I suggest that board members, if y'all could come stand around behind, and then as these folks come up, we can shake their hands, and then when the Klein in Space piece is over, parents, we will have shaken all the, all the students' hands, and then y'all, if y'all want to stay for the board meeting, please feel free. But if you want to, to move, move out, that'll be fine, too. So, does that sound okay? Great.
Say again the name of their project.
Okay, the name of their project is Viral Therapy of Bacterial Infections in Microgravity Settings.
That's right.
The title of their project is The Effect of Microgravity on Microbially Influenced Corrosion of Stainless Steel by Soil Microorganisms. Team members include Brian Chin, Daniel Fan, Forrest Sun, Tara Vathul, and Andy Zhou. Their sponsor is Mona Caldi. The title of their project is The Effect of Self-Assembled Mono-Layers on Microgravity Protein Crystallization. Their team members include Michael G., Max Hall Brown, and Yanni Guo. Their sponsor is Vicki Hermsdorf. For our Trip to Mars Challenge, our K through 1 winner team is Team Spaceship from Limb Team members include Presley Cowan, Jackson Mann, Zachariah Blessinger, Maya Jackson, and Abby Herbl. Their sponsor is Mary Ann Quintana. They are Team Majah, Majah representing the first letter of each of their first names. Team members are Ashlyn Brimmer, Michaela Brimmer, Addison Fowler, Jackson Heflin, and Henry Perrier. Their sponsor is Courtney Urban. finalist Kevin De La Roca, 5th grade Kaiser Elementary, and secondary finalist Grace Wasson, 10th grade from Klein Oak High School. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate and recognize these students and sponsors this evening. Special thanks also to our outstanding principals, administrators, and teaching and learning team for their support of this Klein in Space Innovation Challenge.
So, parents and Klein in Space folks, if, thank y'all so much. Let's give a big round of applause for our Klein in Space folks. And y'all are free to go. Thank y'all for hanging out. That was good. That was good. Good thing. Now, there you go. There you go. That looked cool, though, with all the paint in the back and the vimpage coming out. That's something we can run at Portable. Also, in our next program, we're gonna have one of those big step-in routines, where we can do the pictures in front of that. And that'll be the back. They're not being well-received. Yes, exactly. I've always found that, like, the offstage seats, that's nice. Bye. Bye, sweetie. She was so cute. That was a lot of sitting, Mom. That was a lot of sitting. That's right. I don't blame her a bit. I feel the same way. Bye. Bye-bye. Bye-bye. That's right. That's another smart move. At least the cases of being, we don't have any plans.
Right, it's bad. Right, right, right. I'll take back my adorable hat.
Hey, ma'am.
Hi. Oh, no way. Hi. It's beautiful.
The brilliant pencil. Thank you. Y'all have a good night. Bye-bye. Hello, good to see you. There he is. Yes, it's Raj. Hey, Raj. Yeah, he was in the spelling bee the next day. He was so cute. Oh, God, good morning. Thank you, morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your flexibility. We're going to move forward with our celebration of outstanding, we just saw some outstanding students, and we have some more. First up, from Howdy Elementary, Rachel Walls here, the principal from Howdy, and she's gonna introduce a couple of students and an amazing educator.
All right, good evening, President Wrightmeyer, members of the Board, Dr. Champion, Ms. Spalding, and guests. I'm Amanda Dowd, I'm the Assistant Principal at Howdy Elementary, and I have the honor of introducing two wonderful, outstanding Howdy students tonight. Our first one we have is Aubrey Maudlin. Accompanying Aubrey are her parents, and y'all go ahead and stand. We have Heather and Matthew Maudlin and her brother Cooper. Aubrey relentlessly pursues academic excellence, as evidenced by being on the All-A Honor Roll for four consecutive years. She enthusiastically participates on the Howdy Art Club, Howdy Choir, she plays the cello in the 5th grade strings, and she participates in Girls on the Run. She is a value-driven leader who has demonstrated service to the greater good by participating in our Jaguar Ambassador and Safety Patrol programs. Outside of school, Aubrey is a member of Girl Scouts Troop Number 114016, plays soccer, and participates in the mission trips at Faithbridge Church. Aubrey's teachers describe her as a forever learner that is self-motivated and dedicated to her academic success, and leads others by demonstrating kindness and respect to all. She is always smiling, and positive, and a joy to be around. Next, we have Nathan Cooper. Accompanying Nathan are his parents Catherine and Michael Cooper. Y'all go ahead and stand. His brother Jason and Sister Samantha. Nathan is an equipped scholar that has achieved academic excellence by being on the All-A Honor Roll for five years. A goal-oriented problem solver, Nathan enjoyed participating in the Klein in Space Program at Howdy, Howdy Choir, and the Gifted and Talented Program. He also represented Howdy in the Klein Men's Choir, which was awesome. How, Nathan has acted with integrity as captain of the Safety Patrol and Jaguar Ambassadors. Outside of school, Nathan participates in soccer and takes piano and guitar lessons and enjoys Taekwondo. Nathan's teacher describes him as a forever learner whose humble confidence and ability to collaborate patiently with his peers inspires to embrace challenges and fail forward. Nathan is a leader who leads by example.
And I'm Rachel Wall, the principal of Howdy Elementary, and I'm proud to introduce Kimberly Gibson. With Kim tonight are her husband Billy, her mother Dorinda Fay, her sisters Lisa Fay and Michelle Beerbauer, her mother and father-in-law James and Sunny Blue, and family friend George Jones. Ms. Gibson has been a teacher for 10 years. You can have a seat. She's a graduate of the University of Houston. Go Cougs! A passionate and dedicated 4th grade English Language Arts teacher. Kim is a relationship-driven teacher who supports the development of the whole learner by knowing her students by their names, strength, and need. She provides targeted support that is responsive to her students' needs by relentlessly analyzing student data to drive her instruction. She provides engaging learning experiences that are tailored to meet the goals of her students. She is a forever learner who personally models an insatiable desire to learn and improve by continually self-reflecting on her instruction, to constantly seek the best educational experiences for her students. When I asked Kim to share some personal thoughts about teaching, she stated, "Mark Twain said it best. The secret to getting ahead is getting started. To this day, this is truly how I get my day started with my students. It's all about taking the initiative. I love how our district empowers teachers to fail forward. I was never an overachiever growing up, but God's plan in college led me to teach. I'm very passionate, and it inspires me to grow students to their true potential. I could give you all the cliche answers in the world, but I just love what I do. There's something about planning and engaging lessons, looking at data, building character, and when my students say, 'Oh, I get it now,' that sparks my flame. I really can't explain it, but I can say that teaching is an honor." Kim has shared her passion and her talents by serving on the Howdy Leadership Team, the ESL Committee, the Behavior Study Group, the Units of Study Lead Learner for 4th Grade, and our CIDC. Ms. Kim Gibson.
Come on up front. Come on up. This is my favorite part. Come on up for us. Man, oh, man. All of you are great examples of what Klein ISD is all about. Aubrey. Man, I'm telling you, all the things that they described about you is just, it's just fantastic. I really like the Girls on the Run part because you probably keep them on the run, don't you? That's a wonderful thing. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. It's going to be marvelous to see how you're going to come out in the next couple of years because I think you're going to be back again, right? All right. Nathan. All-A Honor Roll and academic success. You know, me, you, and Dr. Champion share our love for the choir. We probably don't hold a good note, but we share the love. Again, congratulations. You are what Klein ISD is all about.
That's right.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gibson. Love you. I heard them describe you. And I kept thinking about my, you know, all the educators in my family. There seems to be this thing where you just gotta do it. You gotta do it. And when you do it, you just love what you do. And those kids respond to what you do. Again, that's what Klein ISD is all about. Congratulations. All right.
Next up, from Hofius Intermediate School, we have the principal, Kristy Goforth here. Ms. Goforth.
As they're making their way up, we'll say good evening, President Wrightmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Champion, Ms. Spalding, and guests, and parents who are here also. I am Kristy Goforth, proud principal of Hofius Intermediate. And tonight, I have the honor of introducing two outstanding Hofius students who exemplify the attributes of Klein's Promise to Purpose vision and a teacher who exemplifies the profile of a leader and high-quality teaching. Let me first introduce Rayon Meridia. Rayon, you want to step over here? And with Rayon tonight are his parents, Mr. and Ms. Meridia, and his grandfather. Could you please stand? Rayon is goal-oriented, optimistic, and a creative student who is active in the Hofius Symphonic Band and National Junior Honor Society. As a student, he exemplifies the profile of a learner by exhibiting curiosity, humility, perseverance, and resilience. Rayon also serves as a guiding example at Hofius by daily modeling our core values at Hofius, which are honesty, ambition, willingness, kindness, and soaring. Rayon's geometry teacher is also here tonight, Ms. Mitchell, and she says that he strives for continual progress in his growth and attainment of mathematical knowledge. His peers in class often look to him as a leader who reinforces a growth mindset in order to achieve excellence in the task at hand. Congratulations, Rayon. And then our second student, Reagan Massey. Tonight with Reagan are her parents, Doug and Debbie Massey, and her brothers Brendan and Ryan. Also here tonight are Reagan's grandmother, Frona, and her uncle David. Please stand. Reagan is a self-disciplined, innovative, and joyful student. Reagan always has a smile on her face, no matter what her day brings. She has a "we not me" mentality and graciously works to help students in all of her classes. Reagan thinks outside of the box and challenges herself and her peers. Her math teacher, Ms. Sanders, who could not be here because she got ill today, but I know she missed being here because she says that every day Reagan comes into class with a huge smile on her face and always welcomes Ms. Sanders before entering class. She's a leader in class and uses her leadership skills to help all students. She exhibits the characteristics of profile of a learner and embraces Hofius core values. Congratulations, Reagan. And then my excellent teacher that's here tonight, Ms. Valerie Bolt, is an 8th grade Social Studies teacher. With Ms. Bolt here tonight are her husband Jeff and her children Jillian and Lawrence. Could you please stand? It's bedtime. Ms. Bolt has served in public education for nine years. She is a graduate of the University of Oklahoma and holds a master's degree in Educational Leadership from the University of St. Thomas. Ms. Bolt teaches 8th grade Social Studies and also serves as the Social Studies Department Chair and as well as our GT liaison on the campus. Pretty much anything I ask her to do, she steps up and does it. So, I depend on Ms. Bolt a lot. That's off-script. It's just real. She does. Ms. Bolt demonstrates the Klein ISD's profile of a leader by creating an environment that is student-focused, relationship-driven, and personifies the Promise to Purpose investor. She exemplifies an unwavering commitment to serving others and is continuously seeking opportunities for growth and improve as both a teacher and a leader on our campus and in the district. As a teacher, Ms. Bolt values getting to know her students by name, strength, and need in order to reach them where they are. She continually collaborates with teachers to encourage them to personalize learning and utilize technology to provide innovative ways to enhance the curriculum. Ms. Bolt balances career and family. As you can see, that's a big job that she has there as a wife and mother of her three-year-old daughter Jillian and her one-year-old son Lawrence. Congratulations, Ms. Bolt.
Rayan, this is, I want you to have this. Our board, the district, is very proud of you. But what I thought was cool to hear was the symphonic band and your academic excellence. Both of those take a tremendous amount of focus and hard work to perform on both of those. And if there are people who are extremely proud of you, you have a grandparent here. So, that's kind of a big deal, especially for your parents. So, out of everything tonight, not only are we proud of you, but especially who's here this evening. Very special. Great job. Congratulations. Great. Academic excellence. And then what really stands out listening and hearing more about you is the happy heart that you have walking in the classroom every day. That's going to take you a long while. And you've got to make an impact on other people that you won't realize for quite some time. So, keep smiling. Keep doing what you're doing. The impact you're having on others around you and the success you're having in the classroom is just incredible. And you also have a grandparent here as well, which is absolutely outstanding. I know it's proud, the proudest people in the world. Congratulations. Well, what I liked hearing for a second when Ms. Goforth went off-script is, you know, that comes, but that comes straight from her heart. She knows that you're dependable and you're a go-to person. And that's not, you know, not everybody is that way. But it's great for her to have someone to be surrounded with like you. And then to hear the things that you're doing and serving, there's so much that a teacher can do during the day. It doesn't hurt one above and beyond and offer for these, for students like you. So, thank you. Very grateful for you.
All right. Great.
Congratulations, students and the very, very fine teachers. Now, it's a personal pleasure of mine to recognize a former student with our monthly Alumni Award. Dr. Jenny McGowan, Deputy Superintendent, joins us to introduce the March Alumni Award.
Thank you, President Wrightmeyer. Well, we're thrilled this evening to recognize Emily Abson Morgan as the Klein ISD Alumni of the Month. Emily, if you'll come on up here, we'll share a few words about you and Klein. Emily is a proud product of Klein schools. She attended Tice Elementary, Dory Intermediate, and Klein High School, where she was a bear cadet her freshman and sophomore years. She also served on the Student Council and the Good Sportsmanship League. After graduating from Klein High in 1995, Emily attended East Texas State University. She returned to the Klein area to begin her business career. She's the president and owner of the Party City Stores in Umbel and Shenandoah, the Sign Dreamers in Spring, the Woodlands and Tomball, and is also the president of Southeast Texas Holdings LLC and ES Morgan Homes LLC. Through her businesses, Emily donates supplies and funding for school functions, churches, and other organizations. Emily jumped into volunteering with organizations like the National Charity League and Junior Guild. Currently, this outstanding alumni gives her time and resources volunteering with the Benigness PTO, the Will Herndon Fund for Research, and At Lomor Village, a residential treatment facility and emergency shelter for abused teens. Recently, Emily and friends provided 40 new mattresses for the children who live at Lomor Village. They also host an annual back-to-school swim party where each child receives a backpack filled with school supplies, new pillows, sheets, undergarments, socks, and hygiene kits. Since 2015, they have donated 336 backpacks to the children of Lomor, foster children, and children that attend Klein TEP and other area schools. Emily is married to Steve Morgan, who also attended Tice, Dory, and Klein High School. They have three beautiful children, Emma Jane, a 4th grader at Benigness Elementary, Matthew, a preschooler, and James, who's two years old. Many thanks to President Wrightmeyer for helping us to honor Emily this evening. And please join me once again in celebrating Emily Morgan, our March Klein ISD Alumni of the Month.
Thank you. Forty years ago, my parents lived in Houston, where my sister was in 1st grade at Ashford Elementary. My mother, who had been a teacher in Spring Branch, knew that the place to raise their family was the Klein area. My parents moved to the home I grew up in when I was two years old. My husband and I have lived in this community all of our lives. At one point, we contemplated moving, and about five minutes into our conversation, we both said, "There's nowhere else that we would rather be." I love knowing that if I was ever in need, there are a bunch of like-minded people in the community I could depend on. The sense of small-town community is so special, and I believe it's very hard to find this day and age. Most people would think with the titles before my name, I must have really excelled in school while I was at Klein. The honest truth, I was okay. I want everyone to know that what defines you is not if you get into National Honor Society, what your GPA is, if you have a date to homecoming, if you fail at the hard test, or if you don't make the team. What does define you is what you do with your circumstances. Set the goals, always move forward, and know that you have purpose. I wasn't in the top 10% of my class and actually only at the beginning of names call because my last name started with A. I can also say that I failed quite a few math tests, but now use math every day at work and am successful in doing so. Thank you, Mrs. Worth, and my geometry teacher. We all make mistakes, but what you have to remember is that life is not about who you once were. It's about who you are and the potential of who you can be. I am thankful for my parents, who always saw my worth and celebrated it, who believed in me and helped me to find my purpose, who taught me how to be a businesswoman, a philanthropist, and a mom. Thank you to Klein ISD for providing me an awesome foundation. Thank you to my husband, who has the same love of community and sense of urgency to help others. We do not help others for recognition, but thank you to the Board of Trustees. It really makes my heart smile. I also want to thank my three amazing children who have already started helping the community by raising funds for their schools and Mam Food Pantry. These three blessings are the reason that I make sure to have a positive impact in my world in a big or small way daily. Thank you.
I've known her since she was at Tice Elementary. She is, has always been a connector and a giver of people and an humble leader. She sort of downgraded herself, but all along you knew that she was going to be a person that would succeed because she had the heart for it. So, hope to take her picture.
All right.
And next, we have Dr. Jenny McGowan joins us again for the Tasby Stand Up for Public School Award presentation.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. The Texas Association of School Boards sponsors the program Stand Up for Texas Public Schools that recognizes business and organizations that support public schools in our community. We are proud in Klein ISD to recognize honorees at each board meeting and to publicly thank them for their efforts to build community by supporting our staff and students. Tonight, we have the pleasure of celebrating S&amp;V Surveying and sharing a few of the ways that Mr. Garza, the Vice President at S&amp;V, has partnered with Klein to support our Promise to Purpose vision. Instrumental in developing the partnership with S&amp;V Surveying is our outstanding Career and Technical Education Department led by Deborah Bronner Weston Down. I am proud that in Klein ISD, we offer over 180 unique career and technical education courses for our students through 53 innovative pathways that allow students to access rigorous coursework and gain college credit or certifications that will benefit them as they exit with their purpose. Deborah's leadership, along with coordinator Linda Wirt and Dennis Pierce, have paved the way for Great Things for Klein Kids for many years. Deborah is here this evening to help us recognize the value of our partnership with S&amp;V Surveying. Deborah.
Thank you, Dr. McGowan. Good evening, President Wrightmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Champion, Ms. Spalding, and Klein ISD family. I am truly honored to stand here and recognize S&amp;V Surveying and Mr. Ezidro Garza. Mr. Garza is the proud parent of a Klein ISD graduate, junior at Klein Collins High School, and future Klein ISD kindergarten student. For the last few years, Mr. Garza has shared his industry knowledge with Klein Collins Engineering Design Classes as a guest speaker and conducting mock interviews. As part of the Campus Job Shadow Day, S&amp;V opened their doors for students to shadow professionals in a variety of job capacities. Through his service on the Klein ISD Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, Mr. Garza has volunteered as an industry mentor for students at the first Innovation Challenge, Water Warriors Day of Design. For the last two years, has served on the Industry Endorsement STEM Panel at the Klein ISD Pathway Summit and has provided hands-on experience for Klein students as well as neighboring student groups for the Houston Northwest Chamber of Commerce Passport to Your Future event. For many students, this is the event that for the first time they've experienced. have established connections for our CTE department, not only across the state but nationally. This resulted in the National Society of Professional Land Surveyors reaching out to Klein ISD to offer our pathway explorers a significantly reduced cost to challenge the first level of a national certification program for survey technicians. Special thanks to Mr. Garza for his efforts to help Klein ISD build the Geospatial Engineering and Land Surveying Pathway, so that students may obtain an Associate of Science degree prior to high school graduation, Level 1 Land Surveying Certificate, and a Geographical Systems Occupational Skills Award through the Lone Star College System, and then articulate to a university program to earn a Bachelor of Science in GIS or Geospatial Sciences and an accelerated timeframe. It is our honor to recognize S&amp;V Surveying and Mr. Izidro Garza for the major investment of time, talent, and resources shared on behalf of our Klein ISD students, and for standing up for public education. recognize Mr. Keith Steffig, the owner and president of S&amp;V Surveying. Also as part of the S&amp;V team, but also family members, Ms. Meredith Garza, the Business Development and Marketing Manager, his son, a junior in our engineering program at Klein Collins, and now a part-time CAD draftsman at S&amp;V, Izidro Garza Jr., and Timo Garza, his brother and project manager at S&amp;V.
All right.
In addition, Mr. Derek Vargas, the Laser Scanning Manager at S&amp;V, has been extremely helpful with our pathway development. With Mr. Garza are his family members, of course, Ms. Meredith Garza, his daughter Brittany, the Klein Collins graduate of 2011, Elise Izidro, his mother Martha Garza, and father Izidro Garza, his sister-in-law Erica Garza, and his nieces and nephews, Emma from Struck Intermediate, a sixth grader, Justice, a fifth grader at Howdy Elementary, and Teresa, a second grader at Howdy Elementary. If you would all please stand. Thank you.
I have a whole new vocabulary.
That's right.
Here tonight to support S&amp;V Surveyors is a very special person to education itself, and that is Mrs. Donna Bahoric, who is on the State Board of Education. Would you please stand? We want to express our appreciation for your commitment to the students in Texas. Thank you very much for being here and for S&amp;V for this great award. Now, we'd like to welcome Chief Financial Officer Dan Shriver Schaefer with the presentation of the Meritorious Budget Award.
All right. Thank you very much. If I could have Ms. Audrey Aimbridge, Laura Pedron, and Tracy Edinburgh join me for this wonderful award. They did all the hard work. Thank you. Wow. Yes. Good evening, Board President Reitmeyer, Dr. Champion, Ms. Spalding, members of the Board, and guests. On January 25, 2019, the district received notification from the Association of School Business Officials International, otherwise known as ASBO, that once again, Klein ISD has been awarded the Meritorious Budget Award for Excellence in the Preparation and Issuance of the 2018-2019 School District Annual Budget. This is the 14th consecutive year the Budget Office has received this award. Executive Director of Financial Services, Ms. Audrey Aimbridge, who left the building, or at least the room, Director of Budget Laura Pedron, and their staff, which in attendance is Tracy Edinburgh, two members could not be here tonight, Kendra Upchurch and Karen Ryder, as they are out of town, do an outstanding job each year in the preparation of the budget. This includes not only the reporting, but also a significant amount of time working with individual campuses with their individual needs and along with the departments each year. We are pleased to accept this award, which represents the highest recognition for school district budget operations offered by ASBO. Appreciate all your hard work. The budget book has grown to 246 pages.
A wealth of information.
A wealth of information.
That's right. Dan, why don't you stand in the back?
Yes.
If you will stand right upon the screen, we'd like to know your name, the troop, your school, and the badge, citizenship, or communications.
My name is Henry Hall Brown. I'm in Troop 1244. I go to Tice Elementary, and I'm doing the communications merit badge.
Right. So proud of our scouting program. Anyone else? Okay.
We just have a lot of Tice Tigers in the crowd tonight, so I'm just proud.
Tice Tigers. Oh, I love it. Okay, it's time for our intermission now, but this is a time to allow the Board the opportunity to meet our students, the parents, employees, or scouts, or anyone who is honored here tonight. We'd like to shake your hand. So if you'll start over here with Mr. Mann, we'll come through and we'll take a short intermission. May I have your attention, please? We will now continue our meeting with citizens inquiry. Do we have any inquiries, or is there anyone in the audience who would like to sign up now to make an inquiry?
No inquiries.
There being none, we will proceed. Mr. Anderson, our Audit Committee Chairman now has a report of our earlier committee meeting. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sure. Our Audit Committee met earlier today at 5:00, and administration recommended retaining Weaver and Tidwell LLP as the external auditors for auditing the 2018-19 fiscal year, and the committee reviewed the engagement letter. That is it.
Okay. Thank you. We now have the first reading of the proposed modification to local board policy GKD, Community Relations, Non-School Use of School Facilities, as well as proposed modifications pursuant to TASB, Local Update 112, to local policy CCG, CCGA, CCGB, CH, CQ, CB, DH, DIA, FMA, FNG, GF, GKA, and GKB. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, we'll now move to our action items. We have the approval of an order authorizing the insurance of Texas Independent School District's Unlimited Tax School House Bonds, Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, and/or Unlimited Tax School House and Refunding Bonds, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, providing for the award of the state thereof in accordance with specified parameters, approving a preliminary official statement, and enhancing other provisions related thereto. May I have a motion?
I assume so.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Is there additional information before we vote? So sorry about that. We're not going to vote just yet.
Matt Dustin's here with RBC Capital Markets, and he has some additional information.
I was just cutting you guys out. Sorry.
That you'll want to see.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Dustin with RBC. My colleague Clarence Greer was here last month. I see a couple of new faces here, so welcome to the Board. This is the first time I'm before you. Tonight, I have a brief presentation to go over, and I'll hand off midway to Clarence. The first slide, if you'll turn to the next one, is a summary of, if it's not before you. Oh, thank you, Dan. It's in your packet somewhere there. So, tonight, we're seeking approval for kind of the basic concepts of the transaction, and we'll discuss the parameters of that transaction, but this first slide is really the executive summary of our entire report. You currently have an existing authorization to sell bonds in the amount of $121 million and change. Tonight, we're seeking approval to move forward with $78 million in bonds. Those can be broken down into two general categories: $65 million for Facility Project Fund with a 30-year amortization, which is your normal schedule, and then you pay off your technology fund in five years, so that is structured within the total for 78. We're assuming that these bonds are sold on April 2nd. That's the day of pricing, roughly a month from now, and that's the day where the interest rate will be locked, so we'll take bids on that day competitively, and the lowest interest rate will win. We'll communicate with your Chief Financial Advisor on that day, recommending that you either accept or reject that bid. And then, the funds will be delivered roughly a month later, on May 7. If we were to price the bonds today, we'd probably price in the range between 3 and 3/4 to 4 and 10 basis points, so something like a full percentage point below where your outstanding bonds are from 2009, which is great because that presents a refunding opportunity as well. So in addition to the 78 million in new money bonds, we are proposing that you refund or pay off some old bonds with a new bond issue. That is on the second slide, if you'll turn there with me. So the 2009 B Bonds, which are basically the second bond issue in 2009 that you sold, there's some of that that's outstanding that is eligible to be called on August 1st of this year, and you can sell a bond issue and close roughly 90 days before the call date of August 1st and still qualify for it to be a current refunding under the tax law. So roughly $9.4 million of those bonds will be called, and you can see the coupon range of those bonds is about 4.875%. So we're paying them off with roughly a yield of a full percentage point below that, and so there will be some savings that you enjoy of about $35,000 a year until those bonds would have matured, which is a great savings. As a percentage basis, it's 14% savings, which is an excellent rate of savings. Normally, we would recommend moving forward with a refunding if you have at least 3% savings. The threshold of the parameter tonight is setting a baseline of 5%. So as long as we come in above 5%, then the Board is giving authorization for us to kind of move forward on that basis. And with that, I'll hand over the rest of the presentation to my colleague Clarence, who's going to discuss some of these things in more detail.
Again, we're going to be pretty brief with summarizing the action item that was just presented to the Board. Again, my name is Clarence Greer with RBC Capital Markets, Manager and Director, and you have your legal counsel here from Bracewell, and it's a co-counsel with Bates &amp; Coleman, and they drafted the bond resolution, and what you have before, you know, they have like 35 pages or so, so we tried to do a basically shortcut here for one pager on page four to kind of summarize what the parameters are.
Thank you.
So give you little Cliff Notes here, one pager.
There you go.
And so, the three major ideas, the first one is that you're conveying authorization to specifically the superintendent and the CFO to enter to a signed and executed transaction on behalf of the Board, so you're delegating your power. And provided that, certain parameters are met, and these are the major parameters as outlined in the board order, the bond order here. The second, third, and fourth ones are really germane to the transaction that we all look at, you know, in terms of the interest rate itself. While we have, you know, pursuant by law 15%, we expect, again, you heard, about 4% is the interest rate that we would expect to get. If we're materially over 4%, we would advise to come back to the Board, obviously if it's significantly above that. The amount itself that could be issued, you can see that it's not just the $78 million in new money, but again, also the refunding amount, so we cannot issue any, you know, bonds above that power amount. And so, in today's world, if we ran the numbers today, we would pass that test as well. We'd equal that amount in the worst-case scenario. And then, when you start talking about the refunding or refinancing like you would a home mortgage, being able to take advantage of the lower interest rates, that threshold, as you said, was 5%. Now, we're well north of that, so we would pass under today's economic climate as well. But the reality is, you know, we're not selling bonds today. It's going to take some time, and within the next 30 days, we don't anticipate a lot of volatility, but, you know, the major points are that we might see some volatility, but, you know, we don't expect it. We should be in good shape. The next two pages surrounding, it's just your credit rating summary, just so you know, we have the benefit of the PermaSchool Fund Guarantee, which lifts our underlying ratings from how you'd have the AA1 and AA to AAA. And, you know, we spoke with the rating agencies several days ago. We expect the ratings back to be affirmed. So I think, you know, these are some of the most recent highlights of what they've said about us, and basically, you know, it's about your management team. And basically, you know, it's about your management team and a great job that the board has done in terms of governing. And so they definitely understand that we have a legislature that, you know, is looking at some different things that could be injurious to us, but they are giving your credit for really strong management and governance. So we like that. And that's purely because of the hard work that you and Dan's staff have done and superintendent. So that's always good news to get feedback from that. And then last month, we talked about the calendar. And we've done a lot of hard work and we're working ourselves down to the April 2nd sale, which again, that's a competitive sale. But we have the flexibility to change it around if we see something in the market that may not get you the best, may not be the most opportune time. So we have that flexibility to move it around. And again, that's another of the primary reasons why you're doing what we call a parameter sale. So we have the flexibility to move around the sale date and to avoid, you know, bad days in the market. And as Matt said, you have a closing where you receive the funds about 30 days later. But I think those are the salient points. If there are any questions, I'll entertain it for the board.
Are there, is there any discussion? Thank you, R.
I just have a request. Could we get this ahead of time? Or was it in Board Book? I didn't see it.
No, it was not. We got it today. Yeah, so we can absolutely, as soon as we get it, as soon as we're able to generate, we can trigger it.
Send it to Ronnie. Kidding. Thank you, RBC. We really appreciate your presentation. And I sort of jumped the gun on that. Is there any more discussion?
Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So the volatility and the flexibility you have before April 2nd. So is that kind of a day-by-day flexibility?
Yes, sir. So...
If it first goes bad or you see some indicators and you can...
We can see, we can basically sit out a notice. We have a notice of sale that we can amend to the market and let the market know that we have revised the sale date. We will be, and we'll consult our underwriting desk and say, okay, what do you advise? What's the catalyst? And we'll try to navigate around it. The good news is I don't think there are any major FOMC announcements coming between now and then. We had, it was pretty active last week. And it's kind of taken more of a benign view. They're actually looking at lowering interest rates now. But you just never know what the catalyst of the day is going to be or the tweet of the day is going to be that could really, you know, change the market.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Could you, I'm sorry, page 5, the chart with the credit rating grid? Was that the 2016 rating? Is that what we're seeing here?
Right. This was the last time we went, which was last year. And so that was the rating. And so we're expecting, yes.
We'll get another writing call.
We already had the rating calls. And then once we get the result, we'll get an updated report. And so when we come back to the board, they kind of give you a post-mortem of the transaction. We'll have the latest comments from the rating agencies.
So that rating will happen just before or when you go to market or try to sell the bonds? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Simultaneous or how does it?
Yes, sir. We should be getting the ratings next week.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What is the expectation of the ratings?
We expect that the ratings will be affirmed at the current levels. You guys have done a great job in your governance.
With the Permanent School Fund, they're going to be a AAA.
With a AAA.
AAA sounds good.
AAA sounds great. Of course, there's been some news articles on the PSF. You guys have seen that yesterday, so they've been getting in the news lately.
Our ratings are the highest, almost the highest in the state.
Almost the highest in the state. In fact, standing in the poorest, they do not give AAA ratings. They only go up to the double, the AA+. And so, and Moody's only has about, last time I saw, between 12, about a half dozen to a dozen school districts have a natural AAA.
And honestly, because Klein was fast growth, as long as Klein was fast growth, the idea that we have some debt is not surprising. We've built a lot of schools.
Absolutely.
And managed the debt incredibly well. We're nowhere near the 50 cent test.
Nowhere near it.
There's still a lot of room if there's a need. And so the fact is, the high likelihood is they're going to maintain these ratings.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, they're very positive about how you've managed to change. And that's really the narrative to fast-growth school districts.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your discussion as well. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Next, we have the consideration and approval of the schedule of estimated expenditures for the Series 2019 bond sales. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. The next item on the agenda is Budget Review Number 6. Proposed Budget Amendments for the 2018-19 School Year. May I have a motion? I so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It passes 7-0. Moving on, we have the approval of the Project Initiation for the 2019 Elementary School Safety Improvements, MOD Doors. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Now we have the approval of the Project Initiation for the 2019 Elementary School Sound Enhancement Project. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It passes 7-0. Next is the approval for the Class Size Waiver Exceptions from the Texas Education Agency. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Is there discussion?
Of course there is.
Yep. It's hard stuff.
No, I mean, my continued frustration over this, as I'll say, it's not the way, it's not the Klein way to keep increasing class sizes, but I know we're at a point to temporarily accommodate where the state government has put us. But I am happy to see how more of the press avenues have really taken some time to understand a little bit more of it and are publishing good information that ultimately goes to bat for the kids. And I think that speaks loudly of the pressure that not only the, you know, people going up to Austin, but I think once the, you know, when you see it in print in multiple areas, I think that adds even more pressure to get something done. I think personally, I think my, I'm confident that something good will come of it. Whether or not it happens, who knows? But it's just, you know, this is still a painful vote to do. Just knowing how, you know, how crowded we are and we're still growing. So it's my two cents.
I don't think you're an individual saying that. I think all of us are agreeing exactly with what you're saying.
Absolutely.
Just not going to have it go unsaid.
No, I appreciate it. For the record.
And the reality of the cuts last year and then, as y'all know, the communication that we sent out, I mean, recently around looking toward next year. If something doesn't give, either at the legislative level or if we need to find additional resources. I mean, that's where we are. And it is not without heartbreak that that is true because the, I mean, the celebrations that we had in the first hour at this board meeting all were because Klein is who Klein is. And so that's part of what we're all about, is how do we ensure that that continues to be true?
Well, part of it is on us as well. Us as in the community, because there's an apathy over the years that when things are going so well, you're less engaged. And when things need to be done, there's, it's like a vote. It's like, well, you know, it'll get taken care of, it'll be okay. And I think that apathy has caught up to us as well. So there's a lot of factors at play. So more to come.
Along with the outside influence.
Absolutely.
That perpetuated it.
Yes.
But thank you for the awareness that you build in our community as well as putting pressure on, as Ronnie says. Okay. We are going to have a vote on this. All those in favor? Opposed? It passes 7-0. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items you would like to remove?
None.
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 All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. We are now ready to approve the minutes of the special meetings on January 19th, February 22nd, 2019, and the regular meeting on February 11th, 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? It passes 7-0. Moving on to the calendar review, please note the following events. The VISTAS Term 3 Clapout on March 22nd. We have some community conversations on the calendar for March and are looking forward to the academic banquet at Shirley Acres in April. Now we are ready for comments. Starting with you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay. So a notice on the VISTAS Clapout, that'll be at the multipurpose building?
No, at VISTAS.
It will be at VISTAS.
Oh, the VISTAS multipurpose room. Sorry.
Yes, yes.
Got it. Nothing other, I mean, it's always a joy. Like Doug said, that's just the favorite part of giving the kids their recognition. Because that's going to be a blur to them one day. And so you just hope that they sense how proud their parents are and the fruits of how hard they work in school, how that gets recognized. That's it.
Thank you.
I was impressed with tonight, the recognition of our community engagement in our school district. I know Ronnie was talking about how apathy can creep up on you. But it does seem with, I mean, with the alumni we recognize today, she's a business owner giving back to the community. And the client space, all the people who got involved to work with the kids, it was like a total community effort. And I just think over and over, we keep seeing more community engagement. And I think it really enriches our students' experience. It's an obligation, I think, we all have. It's nice to see it. It's growing. And I think it's something we can encourage. We had a really good, I know probably Georgian will talk about it a little bit. We had a great meeting with our legislators in Austin. Kathy, Doug, Georgian, and I were up and expressed the sentiment of our board and Klein and all of us here that we really need to, this is the time now to make some changes. We're relying on you, legislature. And so it was really great. There were a lot of people advocating. We think there might be some good steps forward, but we have to keep pushing. We can't take the pressure off. But it was encouraging. And I'm sure you'll have more to say.
It was.
Thank you. I think I'd just like to be able to spell some of the projects that they were talking about. These face projects, like, really.
Yeah.
These kids are bright, right? It's pretty impressive. And how about Klein Forest Basketball?
There you go!
Yeah, it's pretty exciting stuff.
State champion.
Yeah, that's pretty neat. Love that. And, you know, I thought, two other things. I thought Emily Morgan said really well, what defines you? She said, what defines you is what you do with your circumstances. And I think sometimes we get focused on, you know, I've got to be number one in my class or I have to make in every absolute top rank possible or, you know, these kind of things. And absolutely, we strive to be the best. But I think it's important that every student realizes that as long as they're given their best, they got an opportunity to succeed in life. And I think when we highlight alumnis like this, I think it's a really great thing to say, you know. Because she not only learned about academic success, but she also learned about tenacity and all those things that, grit, that makes her successful. And I just want to echo what Julie said. Really, we've got to keep the pressure on our legislators. We've just got to keep pushing. It's trending now, so it's really hot to talk about. So we have to make sure that it continues to trend because now is the time.
That's right. Good, great.
I don't want to be redundant, but all the things you just said.
I'm sorry. Next time.
You know, basketball, the legislature, the alumni. You know, again, you're right. We focus on the high academics and we should. But we should not forget that there are those who do well and still, you know, the character pieces there that helps them extend their careers. So we like that part of it as well. And I think we do it well. So, you know, hats off to all those teachers who stand in front of those kids every single day, every single day. So again, you know, that's what we do and that's what we do well.
I just wanted to mention that, you know, we look at things and we're always looking at how other people see us. And we had the opportunity to go to a Tasby workshop while we were in Austin. It was like the legislative day. And we sit down and we pull out a magazine because it is their annual report. And we don't think about this. And we looked at it and it was actually on the cover of the magazine was Klein Collins. And it's a busy day at Klein Collins. And when you see it, and I wish I had brought it, when you see it and you look at it, you see smiling faces. And that's why we're here and that's what it's about. No matter what it takes, we get it done. So it was pretty cool because I went, I know this place. And you open it and it says photo, Klein Collins High School. And so that's, that's the thing that really does show is when it's a candid shot and you look at it and you see kids and they're happy.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Couple of things. I've got one, Darby and I talked earlier. Klein Forest is in the finals. If they beat Sabola, they play in the finals. If they don't, they play in the third-place game. But one of the other teams that's there is called Duncanville. Duncanville is superintendented by a Klein Forest graduate.
That is right. That is right.
Mark Smith is in Duncanville now. So we may have a superintendent rooting for not his own team.
We'll watch it, won't we?
I'll be calling him.
He didn't play varsity basketball at Klein Forest, but he did play, I think, freshman ball at Klein Forest. Secondly, German Fest was exciting. I want us to send out some kind of correspondence to find more Germans to come. There weren't as many as we were hoping to have this year. But it was a great event, a great evening. Thanks for all the support. But sadly, after 48 years, is it? Henry Tannenberger has retired or stepped aside. Our orchestra wasn't there. We had some Polish group, which is fine, but it wasn't the Henry Tannenberger orchestra. It was just not the same.
Only Rick and Butch Todd. And Dr. Champion, you did a great job.
It is too late. It is too late.
The German or the Greek languages you spoke, whichever it was.
I'm not sure you do.
It's true. But finally, I think everybody seems to think this board is really just about schools, about business, but we also have personal lives. And on a very personal note, I want to say, Ronnie, I'm so sorry for what you're lost. I wish you nothing in your family, but the most sincere heartfelt condolences.
Very good.
That's a tough loss.
Very true.
That's all I have.
Well, again, we did do the legislative day and I wish I'd had this packet before we went because in it, it has exactly where every legislator is, their room number, et cetera, and their office number. So we will have this next time in advance. And I want to thank the two ladies who rode with me in the rain and trusted this little lady to drive them. But this is, as you say, it's a time for pressure because students are counting on us and they are counting on the legislators as well. So as we communicate with them and as we talk to our community and push in our communities for them to speak, to speak for our students, we're going to do this thing and do it well. So, and go Klein Forest. Is this the furthest that any team has gone?
Klein Forest did this a few years ago.
They did it a few years ago. We're going to take it all the way. Okay. Thank you. I can't hear you, but I'm sure...
Two thousand eight.
Okay.
Two thousand eight was the last time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I want to just celebrate all the things that y'all all did, but I also just want to pause for a second and really reflect on what was presented about Klein ISD tonight in the celebrations all the way through the meeting. And so we had, from the business perspective, we had not only a meritorious budget award, but also looking at the debt management this board and administration has done throughout the years, leading to some of the highest ratings in the state. So you have that as a foundational piece. Then you have, have pieces like the alumni that we saw, not just, I mean, the one that was presented, but also this room filled with people who have been part of Klein and part of this community for years. And, I mean, a Tice Tiger shout-out. There was also a Howdy Jaguar. There could have been a Howdy Jaguar shout-out tonight, and there were just a lot of this, of these, of these folks who have been in the district for so long, which is so incredible. And you add on top of that the students that we, whom we saw all over, all over, but particularly that innovation challenge with the Klein in space, even to the art of the patch that was celebrated as well, you know? I mean, I mean, that kind of work is just incredible. It's really just a huge celebration of what Klein continues to do in the face of some challenging circumstances. And so I think back to, what are we doing about it? And it's not just a matter of sitting back and saying, well, we'll see what happens. Not only we all go into the legislature and us staying engaged there, but that Klein Leadership Coalition. And again, I have shouted out, and I'll say it again, that when Jenny McGowan brought that forward, this idea of bringing all these people together around this topic, I'm almost like, are you, what? I mean, it has been, I mean, absolutely brilliant, and so thank you for continuing to push on that, Jenny, for sure, because the energy in that room among those three hundred folks is just remarkable. So as we move forward, we had the session last time around, how do you engage with legislators? How do you engage with your friends and neighbors around, specifically around our legislative priorities? And it was, it was very powerful learning. And so it is, at the end of the day, I love what Kathy said. I love that, that at the end of the day, what we're about is what's on the cover of that TEA Annual Report, you know? With smiling faces of kids coming to Klein ISD to get to do the things that they love to do, like the innovation challenge, or the choir, or the track club, or whatever it is, basketball and academics. And so it is, it is just, it continues to be a great place to learn and to live. So thank you all.
Well, we're going to move into closed session, and it's in private 551.071, Private Consultation with the Board's Attorney, including Board Governance. 551.072, Discuss, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. 551.074, Deliberation Regarding Appointment, Employment Duties, Evaluation of Employees, Public Officials, Including Board Governance and Superintendent's Contract and Evaluation. The time is now, it says three thirteen. I don't think that's right. Eight fifty-five. If there is no objection, it is now nine fifteen, and this meeting is adjourned.